We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Do we have questions in the minutes of the previous meeting? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Bob made the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Kathy second on the favor. Opposed. Motion carrying. Questions or complaints? Is there a motion to pay the claims as presented? Daryl May's motion, is there a second?
Okay.
Sam second on the favor? Opposed. We have building permit number seven forty-two RPC Incorporated through a five Main Street. I think Brian, did you want to speak tonight to us about it?
Yes. We presented earlier last year. We've made the change to just make it a little bit larger. I think everybody's got to agree on it. It'll be about a fourteen office space building through two by hundred and five.
Any questions of Brian? Is there a motion to approve? Daryl made the motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Bob second on the favor? Opposed. Kurt, the water project.
It's pretty quiet out there. The engineer was down today and we opened up with a two bids for the water main. We started on Main Street, the first and third. The first bid submitted was by Rowe, same contractors that do the paving. And their bid was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars even. Second bid was by Brackney Excavating. And their bid was a hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. What the engineer wanted a chance to look these over, make sure both bids had everything included and all the paperwork done properly. And if it is, he would recommend that we go with the low bid contingent upon the contracts meeting all the specifications. And they were pretty extensive, so he wanted to take them back to his office and look them over and give us a recommendation next week. So it may be even as soon as Friday of this week. But realistically, they couldn't get started until they get all their bond work done, which would take a couple of weeks to get that done from the time they sign the contract. So we need to get it signed as soon as we can. We thought sometime next week, if you pass that motion tonight contingent upon his approval, we can go ahead and have it signed next week. And we only need like Mike there with the contractor. And then they can proceed and get all their bonding work done. And once their bonds have all been approved and submitted, then they have forty-five days till completion. And what he planned on doing was going ahead and if everything works out that way, sign the contract, we'll have the pre-construction meeting immediately following, and they will be given notice to proceed. So basically, next Wednesday or so, we should have, or Thursday, we should have signed the contract. Another week or two after that, they will be given notice as soon as they get their bond work turned in. Actually, the low bid was almost right on their estimate for the project. His estimate was a hundred and forty thousand. And the low bid came in at a hundred and thirty-eight, so.
Houses being paid for?
Just through our funds.
For what?
Yeah.
And the low bid again was Rowe?
Rowe.
Is the lane open?
They're gonna keep, according to the plans that we submitted to NDOT, the southbound lane will be kept open. Now, it'll be closed intermittently, you know, if they have to move a truck or bring up pipe or something, but fifteen minutes at a time maybe, you know.
Northbound?
Northbound will go around First and Weber's Lane. And if they do have to close the road for, say, five to six hours, which will only be, they have to cross First Street at the bottom completed cross. So it's gonna have to be closed for a while there. They're gonna, the bypass will be around Weber's Lane and Fourth Street, First Street. And they'll have flaggers and one lane traffic at a time during those periods. We're not gonna try and have semis passing each other on Weber's Lane, so.
Any questions from the board for Kurt? Is there a motion to approve with the contingency?
I'll make that motion to approve the bid for Rowe for a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars contingent upon the approval of our engineering firm, JRW.
A second.
Motion's been made, Sam second on the favor? Opposed. Motion carrying. Thank you, Kurt. Is there a representative from Paul Rowe here tonight?
I'm here.
Okay. You're on.
I'm on. I hope all you didn't come just to see me talk.
They're on the camera.
So, well, the reason we're here tonight is because of it, I assume you're Tammy, right?
Yes.
Tammy and I spoke last week and I asked just for a brief moment of your time just to have an explanation on, I believe, the board has decided permanently or is still in the process of...
Nothing's been awarded yet.
Nothing's been awarded yet. So, one, can I be, can you guys explain to me the issue that we have? She has, Tammy's told me that there was a document that we did not have included in there, in our bid packet. We recognize that. The contention that I have is that the documents that were given to us to bid on, there are actually two numbers that are supposed to be presented in there, which create confusion. There's the first sheet, which is the spreadsheet, which is the breakdown of every single street that you are looking to pay back. Those are broken down by the square yardages, by the tonnage, by the exact dollar amount, and they total up. Those are the, that is the number that you derive the low responsible bid or two. Now, the sheet that's in question is the sheet that you used to use before you had this sheet, the new sheet. The idea was is to try and fine tune the scope of work so that it was fair to the contractor and to the city as far as this is what we want to do and this is how much we propose to do it for. In the old days, on the old sheet, there was basically just a per ton laid price for streets and alleys. There was no definition of which street, how many areas. It could be five tons or five hundred tons, which by the unit cost changes that drastically. So I'm not trying to say that the document wasn't included in there. To me, as the estimator, as the project manager for this, for this, for this job, I looked at that sheet and I saw two things. On the backside, there is the non collusion affidavit, which is important. On the front side, you guys ask us for numbers for graders and backhoes and tons. We don't use that. I've been handling this account for about five years and I've never used those numbers. We use the spreadsheet. Those are the sheets that we, those are the individual streets that we list, that Brent takes us out, shows us, says this is what I wanna do. We measure it, we give him a number for it. In the case that we do more work than what is on the sheet, we do not refer to these unit costs. The other, the old sheet, I'll call it the old sheet, we give him a price or we work towards your budget. You have a budget that you spend every year. My example of that is the bike trail that we did last year for you. You had a budget. That quote was two years old. The scope changed about ten times in the time that we originally bid it to the time that we actually went out and bought it, actually did the work. The scope actually expanded, so what we did was work inside of your budget number with Brent to make sure that the city got what they needed and that we didn't spend more money than what you had. We did not refer to a sheet of unit costs to do that. We worked with you to give you the product that you needed and that you were asking for. And we were successful at that. So my argument is, is that although the sheet is, was in the packet, I'm not denying that. I have looked over it from one end to the other. I still cannot see where it says that it is a required document. The non collusion part is the piece that NDOT or that the Indiana Code says has to be included in your packet. We've had that included in there. So what I'm asking you is, is I believe that this is a slight technicality. It will cost you thousands of dollars more to use the other contractor who's here tonight. There he is, Paul Eater. I see it as a technicality. And it's not necessarily, and we, Tammy and I talked about this, I think there's an argument that said that that sheet shouldn't even be in your bid packet because it's not used yet. So where the confusion comes is, is you have two different sheets. Paul, I don't know if you wanna speak on this or not. There are two different sheets. There's a sheet there with unit costs for prices of tons laid, and then there's an actual spreadsheet that has everything that you have, that you wanna have done, that's priced out to the dollar. And if you break those numbers down, they're not the same. Like this year's bids, my numbers are about seventy-six dollars a ton laid, but yet my pricing sheet is about sixty-five. So I know I've bounced around a little bit about that. I don't know if that makes sense to you or not. But basically, you have two different sheets and two different sets of pricing the way it lays right now.
This is the sheets in question, right here. And right on there, it says this bid must include application of these materials and labor. It's right there, that sentence right there.
And that's...
And that sheet, we go off of...
That's what I'm reading also. This bid must include application of these materials and labor. That doesn't tell me that it has to be included in the bid packet.
Says those prices have to be on there though.
Says those prices have to be on there, but it doesn't say that sheet has to be in the bid.
Now, they do check by state statute.
It's not required by state statute. And this is what Brent and I, and I've talked to everybody, I think, the last two weeks. It's not required by state statute. I think it's more of a local requirement, but it's always gonna been there. And he's argued the usefulness of it, and I, I don't know if Brent's here tonight or not.
He's not.
Okay. And he's, he's talked about as well, the spreadsheet, yeah, I think is the more important document, but, and that might be something that needs to be addressed for future, but he knows my, my position is that this bottom part does say that it's required.
It must be.
Yeah. And they did have their non collusion affidavit. I know you had mentioned that it's on the back of that sheet, but they did have it in there with their Form ninety-six. So what they're missing is that one page right there. They do have the affidavit, because the affidavit is required, and that was in there. This is the one sheet that's missing.
That sentence to me, this bid must include application of these materials and labor. Application is to actually produce. Application and labor.
The second sentence too, that whole bottom part.
The second sentence. All materials to meet Indiana State Highway Commission specifications.
I don't know what's...
We did that.
The second paragraph, yes. The pricing shooting for the cost of equipment, labor supervision, et cetera, which is what the breakdown of the labor on...
Which we have done in our spreadsheet. I think it's redundant, and I'm not, I'm not gonna quote you, but you said I had valid points on all...
No, I, I hear your argument, the usefulness of the document. That's definitely something that, that everybody needs to evaluate for future reference, because if it's pointless to have it, why require it?
Well, one of the issues is, is, you know, it's not the way business is conducted in Brookville. When we get to the point where there's extra work, we don't use the sheet to derive...
I use the price per ton off that sheet.
Well, I don't.
For the extra...
I don't. I work...
It's the only thing you can go by. I mean...
I'm saying, my numbers that I quoted...
What did you guys intend? Did you intend it to be included or not? That's my...
You can't pick numbers up out of the air. You gotta go off something. And that sheet right there shows you what price per ton is that you're using.
Well, I'm saying that my numbers that I quoted on my spreadsheet aren't consistent with that, and they never have been.
Mine are. That's where I get my numbers from.
And there, we have the point of we've created confusion with two sheets.
And you may, you may be right on that, but it still says what it says, and that's, you know where I'm saying it.
I know. And my argument is, is I do not see on this sheet where it says that it is a required document in your bid packet. That's my argument.
Are you saying that all of these items are in the other sheets?
Those are, those are our general unit cost numbers for tons laid, areas milled. If you wanna rent a backhoe from me, or if you wanna buy number fifty-three stone from me, that's our price quoted to you. The sheet that we use on the spreadsheet is the breakdown, is the actual money that you're going to spend. I quoted you sixty-four thousand dollars for the work that you were going to do, and I was the low number. That's how I became the, the lowest, lowest number.
But this is itemized, right?
Yes.
And you say the other sheet is not itemized?
It is itemized.
This is the other sheet. This is their spreadsheet.
It is, it's itemized by the sheet. Or by the street. It's itemized by the area, every single individual street that you're going to pay.
Well, I'd like to sit down with Brent and go over this again, explain what your point of view. And when we talk about it, if you wanted to come, and you wanted to come too, we could sit down and talk about it and see what it works. The, the main thing, when I looked at it with Brent, was I saw this, this sentence, bid must include, this needs to be filled out, is what I interpreted to say. And, and it wasn't filled out.
That's correct. It was not included in there.
So that's just, and I'll talk it over with Brent again and we'll see what he says.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. And I appreciate you all taking the time to listen to our argument. You have a busy evening in front of you, so thank you for putting this on the front of the agenda.
What is your name and company?
Rick Seaver with Paul Rowe Company.
S.I.E.V.E.R.
Brent, has your phone number?
Yes.
Yes, we'll work on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Should I guess we're taking that until further information? Resolution number one dash two thousand fifteen, I think that's done.
This is with regards to the beginning, the approval process of the comprehensive plan. Unfortunately, I was on vacation the week that you all met last time. My seventy-five-year-old mother finally decided to leave home after the passing of my father, so I felt we needed to go ahead and take vacation. But I understand there was some confusion about the process and how we move forward. Mainly, the purpose of your last meeting on February twenty-fourth was to get preliminary approval and some type of consensus so we could move forward with the adoption process we have advertised for approval by the Franklin County Area Plan Commission for tomorrow night. And OCR will be weighing in on that final adoption draft as well, so all those comments will be brought back to you for final approval at a future meeting date. So happy to answer any questions or anything that you may have about the plan and its final adoption.
And I've updated on what transpired at the last meeting. And when we were at the last meeting, my understanding, and I think at least the board members I've spoken to, was understanding was that we, it was just a, we were just looking at the contents and the product that you guys had produced to us. And that we were okay with that content to move forward with the legal process per Afterwards, there, there was, after the approval, I guess, of the plan, not in a final sense, I don't think that was the intent, although it was kinda explained that way at the end of the meeting. So that raised a lot of flags for a lot of people.
Sure.
And right after the meeting, I began researching and talking to individuals, including yourself, about the questions raised. So it does go before the Area Plan Commission tomorrow night.
Correct.
And that is actually the start of the statutory process where they'll review it and all your prove it or disapprove it and certify it back to us.
Correct.
At that point, we hear, we hear it again, we see it again. So I, what did you hear tonight? Wanted to clarify what you just said should have been said at the last meeting that wasn't said. And then because the resolution has some language in there, it doesn't mention the Area Plan Commission. And it's, it does say final document, although I took it as meaning like the, we like, we were content with the contents of the final draft.
Correct.
I can see the interpretation that was made by other individuals. So I guess what I was wanting to know from you is if we rescinded that resolution and then just have APC here tomorrow night and it comes before us, is that going to cause any concern for OCR? Because the whole purpose of the resolution was to tell them, look, we're okay with what 's been produced.
I spoke with a representative from OCR and they said there is no problem as long as the draft that we're pushing through the adoption process with the Plan Commission is indeed that your draft that you want to see approved.
Okay. And that can be done by consensus at this point? Okay. So I guess some of it, my legal advice to you guys is to go ahead and rescind the resolution, just do it by consensus, so there's no confusion as to legality of it.
Yeah. The, the approval for the OCR funding process is a little different than the actual approval for implementing it as the comprehensive plan for the town. So I think that's where the confusion came about, and I apologize for that.
So is there a motion to rescind the resolution number one dash two thousand fifteen? I thought we rescinded it by vote and then by consensus approval. I'll make the motion, is there a second? Daryl second on the favor? Opposed. Motion carrying. Is there a consensus now that we are on board with this plan and we want to move forward with the APC and start the process of final approval? Is there any agreement?
And I'd like to make a point that John, remember you said, you spoke about it, and then the other guy said, I don't know, and then, so we went ahead and did it.
We requested your...
Yeah, yeah, we requested it, and he did a good job. And so he owes you a quote, I think.
I will also be in attendance at the Area Plan Commission meeting tomorrow night, so if there's any other questions that come up, don't hesitate to let me know and I'll keep you all posted.
Your name again is?
Evra Luzier. Z.I.E.R.
Are you with GR heavy?
Yes.
Thanks for coming.
It was published in the newspaper. There was controversy about that.
I guess it was questioned whether it was published and apparently, don't we read all that?
No, just...
Yes, no.
It was published on, what was it? Proof of publication where it was published.
Okay, well, we do have a copy from the paper if there's any question.
Yes. Just kinda setting the record straight, it was published.
Okay. Thank you. We have a bond here for Lynn Brown, and then board approval. Assured bond. Motion approved?
I'll make that motion.
Sam made the motion second. Kathy second on the favor? Opposed. And Melody. Where's Melody?
She was out there. She is.
I took a way through to go.
I was just here for the bike grant. I know that we're listed. I didn't know how soon we needed the bids for taking down the houses.
Apparently, Bob, you know, a little bit more...
Yeah, I talked to the guy at the state on this, and he said that, I was talking to the wrong person. He said, he said because we got the second run-through and he needed, and we were, he was doing forward work of what they were doing, we needed to talk to this next lady, and she's, they're going to come down and assess properties with us. So it's going to be a few, a few weeks before I hear any more back.
So we should go ahead and get more updated quotes.
You could if you want.
Okay.
Because that, that will come up in there.
Okay.
Okay? But it's not a rush right now.
Okay. We just wanted to make sure what we should, our next step should be...
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Now, I guess they're, pardon. Apparently, we have some people here to discuss the Main Street project renovation. Is there a spokesperson?
I'll start out, but then beyond that, I hope whoever speaks will do it with respect in an orderly fashion. We appreciate what you're allowing us to do, and congratulations, I guess a little sugar first, congratulations on the bike grant, and hopefully that'll help everybody with some of our concerns. But unofficially, I asked and called two meetings. They were approved. John was at the meeting, so we did nothing illegal by his words. And as you can see, it was a, it was wide open. Many of those here tonight were also at that first meeting and the second meeting. First meeting, we just kicked things around, discussed the facts and the issues, and set up a second meeting from there. And in the first meeting, I asked for kind of some committees and to study things and bring information back to the second meeting. They did. We had committees that studied the lights, the Main Street group took over that. Kelly, some of the other ones did some of the studies on the sidewalks and the pavings and things. So from that meeting came the plans that I gave, we had, we had a copy I gave Mike. Did you get, up those over? But anyhow, that was, it wasn't majority, but it was consensus, or it was majority but not unanimous, I should say, of those plans. But that's what they came up with. The biggest concern is, and you've heard it before, is businesses and individuals being able to get to their properties, continue business in orderly fashion, fashion without blockage and things like that. So that's the constant theme, I think, throughout the meetings and throughout what you've heard all along. But again, it was unofficial. I just called them because I felt something needed to be done. Everybody's been very good about input and discussion, and a lot of good things came from it. Again, that was typed up and presented to you, and I'll let you call anybody else you want to if anybody else wants to speak to it, if I did not cover the things. The parking, the lighting, you know, the paving, the timing and everything is, is part of the concern and was, was broken down and presented to you on those, on that plan, so.
Thank you again. Any comment, other comments from the public tonight?
A couple. My opinion, or maybe I don't hear the facts, is there's some unknowns. Who actually owns to the curb? You know, you hear so-and-so says this, so-and-so says that. Have we gotten a legal ruling?
And I've always thought the...
Well, if you recall an illegal meeting, then I was gonna investigate that.
Yeah, no, I do remember that.
I don't have an answer.
Okay. I think before we can get a complete, you know, plan, we gotta know that. Huge. And secondly, you know, figures are thrown around, so-and-so's gonna pay for this, so-and-so is gonna pay for that. What actually dollars and where are they coming from are we working with? Has that been determined? I know, you know, NDOT says it's not an open checkbook, but they say, give us a plan, give us a wish list, we'll trim it from there. It's an eighty-twenty match for many things. What's, where's the twenty percent coming from? You know, what, what dollars do we have to work with? Obviously, if you plan a project and you don't have, you don't know what your budget is, it's tough.
Is it, what you're getting at is it's possible that IDOT only is responsible for the street and the curves. It won't have nothing to do with the sidewalks and the lights. Is that right?
I don't know.
No, there, there was a meeting several weeks ago and NDOT was here.
No, there, there was a meeting, uh, several weeks ago and Endot was here. And the gentleman said that they were going to replace sixty percent of the sidewalks. They don't have any dollar figure from this point, they're, they're only in, I mean, they're in phase one of it.
Yeah, but do they own the sidewalks? I mean, as far as I understand.
They have a right of way.
I dot only is got to be responsible for the streets and the curves, that's what fifty-two goes through, that's theirs.
The map says they got a forty-foot right of way.
But does a right of way give them the right to replace the sidewalks? Or if it does not, do they have to buy them from us before they can, from the merchants, the owners, before they can replace them?
No, and I, I've been researching this and it is preliminary research, so it's not set in stone, but there, there's a statute I found today. It's called the Barrett Law, it's thirty-six dash nine dash thirty-six two. Um, felony improvements can be made under this chapter by a municipality. Sidewalks, curbs, streets, alleys, paved public places, lighting, water main extension, emergency warning systems. And under that statute is where you can get authority to do those things. Um, it's also my understanding, and I don't have anything in writing yet, that the road is actually platted, um, I think it's sixty feet or sixty, sixty something feet, I don't have it in front of me. Um, which is obviously a lot wider than what the street actually is in reality. But the plat for the street is, um, quite large compared to what it actually is. So that would improve John some of the sidewalk space as well.
Now address your ordinance, chapter ninety.
The, is this where the proprietors are responsible for the sidewalk repairs? Yeah, that exists, yeah.
Yeah, what, I mean?
I, I mean, that's, that's, that's an ordinance, um.
So what, law supersedes the other?
Well, state statute supersedes any local ordinances.
I should add, and after the first meeting, there was some questions similar to what you've heard tonight. And I was given a channel to follow, which I did, um, submitted it to this lady representative from the Seymour District of Endot. And I got a response the next day thanking me for submitting the questions. They would be directed to the proper departments and that's the last we heard from them.
Endot has said two different times that they didn't care if they did the sidewalks or not. That's up to us. How about we take your matching money, the eighty-twenty money, you give it to renovation Brookville and we'll fix the sidewalks. You guys won't have to do anything. Endot can come in and do the ADAs, fix the storm sewers on the corners and grind and pave.
How about the curb, Kelly?
That's fine too.
I mean, curbs included in what you're talking about?
Mm-hmm, we'll do the curb too.
Okay.
From where to where? Starting where?
Third Street to Tenth Street.
And, uh.
And I believe the Main Street Group, which is typically responsible or takes on the responsibility of beautification and historical preference of the town, could take care of the street light situation and that can be done in two thousand eighteen. Along with park benches and all the niceties that this town would like to have.
Is that Third Street to Tenth Street also?
Could be.
Have you done any, uh, money samplings on what that would cost?
Well, they did Rushville, again, for fifty thousand dollars. Duke Energy in conjunction with whoever did them, if it was Endot or if it was the Main Street, I'm not sure. I figure we'll probably double that, so it'd probably be a hundred thousand dollars. I would assume we'd be able to go to OPRA as Main Street and secure that grant.
Would they damage the sidewalks when they're putting in those lights?
I was told that, uh, they jet, they could jet out underneath them. But if we do the sidewalks next year, two thousand sixteen, um, the conduit can be laid in most of those places while they have the sidewalk removed. Lay the conduit, if, uh, let's say we go to Kelly's store, which he spent thousands of dollars on his sidewalks to make them look very beautiful, very responsibly moved. Um, in that fashion, they could jet underneath that one and run the conduit right into it.
One of the arguments against that proposal is that the project, as everybody knows, goes from Blue Creek to Butler Run. So obviously, there's more than the Main Street businesses in, involved in that. But the businesses are the ones that's fighting, you know, for the economic value of their business. If it's blocked, it's minimal and, you know, they can lose their businesses. The residents have concerns, so we were aware that the project goes further than Third to Tenth, but, uh, that's considered, I know, the downtown of Brookville. And I think, you know, from, from our two meetings and from this, you know, obviously it's, you know, you can see everybody's concerned by the turnout is hopefully not too many more meetings, I know you're on timeframe, is that a small committee from here and a small committee from you that's set up legally could meet and get the facts and figures and, and go on, proceed without a lot of delay and certainly no harassment and, uh, you know, things like that. And that's, but that's your call, we know the final decision is yours and yours alone. But I think the hope is to come to an understanding and proceed in orderly fashion and as quickly as possible so they know where we stand and where you stand, what can and cannot be done.
You know, I, I did talk to Bill Reed, who's from Endot, uh, this last week. And he said he, they were going to be in Lafayette tonight, so they couldn't, he'd like to come to the next meeting and go over any concerns. And we did, uh, email him a copy of that proposal that you had. And, um, he did say in previous meetings that we would lose the state money if, uh, for the sidewalks, if we did them ourselves and, and off the air. Okay, so if this, uh, group that you're heading can come up with the money to do all the sidewalks, hallelujah, you know? That's, you know.
Can't we use the redevelopment money like you guys were?
We weren't using that.
What are you using for match? For your eighty-twenty match, where the money comes from?
That's where we'll come up with the money, but see, the Brookville Redevelopment Commission is a separate entity from the town board.
I understand that.
And they decided.
But why can't we use that too?
Well, that's what you need to do is talk to those people.
Okay.
Because we can't tell you.
Well, Jed told us thirty times that's what that money's for, for something like this.
Well, see, this was brought up at the Main Street Group today and, uh, Barb came up with a really nice proposal to present to the redevelopment group. I said, you should do that. And, uh, but to me, we shouldn't accept anything from anybody as we're, that we're going to do it until the monies are secured. Because we don't want to take a chance on losing money that we already have secured with the state. But if enough money came up where you guys could do the sidewalk.
And that's another argument that's on the con side.
Yeah, see, that's it.
Is that there's allegedly free money.
Yeah.
In one of our meetings along the line, I forget where it was at, the money that's coming to this project's coming from several different areas, different grants and stuff, Wade explained to me. And somebody made a comment, somebody from the state or whoever made a comment, that that money, some of that grant money, if we did the sidewalks in a separate deal, they would just take that part of that grant money and it would be granted to the city of Brookville. And then the city of Brookville Town Council would be responsible and overseeing that part of the project. So the money really wasn't lost, it just has to be redirected to the town instead of through the whole project.
You know, I don't remember that at all, but I would want it in writing before.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, because nobody can say something, but if you don't have it in writing.
But somewhere along the line, I'm sure I heard that at one of our meetings. And I do, do know, Judge said this several times, that the, the money's come, it's coming from several different grants coming together to make this project. So, could you funnel one of those grants, you know, and, you know, do that with it? I don't know, but that was something that was brought up.
A lot of times there's legalities in there that says you can or can't do this with grant money. And you don't want to cross it because then you lose the grant money.
And that was one of the questions I submitted, when I submitted the questions that came up from our first meeting was just exactly what Randy stated. If we don't ask the state to do this, can the money be allotted and put into a financial institution or given to the, the town for usage? And again, I got no answer on any of those questions.
And see, when I, when I talked to, uh, Bill Reed, he's, he's, he just kind of laughed and he said, you know, you guys are putting the cart before the horse. He said, you're, you're going way ahead of, he said, of what they're at. They're still in phase one and they don't even have anything concrete themselves. And I told him that, well, you know, we want to get our ducks in a row. We want to make things, and I, I did go in and, um, communicate with several communities around here that had worked on it. And their main thing was, if you want to do this right, get your group together, plan on the worst possible scenario and then do things in your community like send out flyers. If it was pizza Pete, he should send out flyers to all of his customers starting in Thanksgiving of two thousand and sixteen and say, this is where you're going to come in to get your product. Or we're going to have a delivery system throughout that time, you can get your product that way. Or if those workers are working out in the street, go out there and say, hey, you want some pizza, I'll sell it to you. Things like this where they wanted you to do every little possible thing to make sure that just in case this thing all happened, all of it went on twenty seventeen, that you would be covered. And they gave me a whole list of things. And every one of the people that I talked to, because I sent them email or I called them, uh, they said it was tough with their project, but it was well worth it when it was done.
I think some of the stuff that what you said is the frustrating part to these, these people is that there's no figures known, there's really no timeframe. Um, you know, when does, when does the state or whatever release figures? Uh, you know, and then if, if you need more input from these people, then I get back to the point of a small committee sitting down and within the near future, if you don't know anything, which I believe you don't, I know the figures either, but if there's a way to get these things, then sit down and put it in black and white and submit them and force some answers. Because, you know, we could be sitting here six months from now, again, saying, you know, we don't know. I think we know what we want.
When he was here, he asked for pricing of lights. He said he wanted it in a month, it's been five weeks.
That's what I, that's why I tried to call the meeting. And what, what that resolution is telling you is that for the moment, we'll accept what the, the lights the state is willing to put in it in their proposal, right? If I'm wrong, someone say so, but.
You know, uh.
That's what I, that's what your, your paper says, is that they'll accept those lights and, and we assume against assumption, because no, we don't know for sure, there's no cost to the town or anybody else. It's in the, it's in the money that the Endot had planned, you know, in their project. So if that's the case, basically, everybody's willing to accept those lights and go on. And as Gordon said, then Main Street and other groups would be responsible for hopefully securing funds to add additional lights and do other projects at no cost to Endot and no cost to the town.
So, so who oversees that project then? If, if, if this does occur that way and the Main Street does secure funds, who oversees the project of getting that work done?
People you hired to do it.
But is, is this some of the town board would have to hire?
Well, I think our, uh, you know, someone, someone that's willing to step up. Actually, Duke Energy, I would think, since they're the ones doing the installation of the lights and they're the ones that's going to come out and do the lighty proposals, because there's certain brightnesses at certain corners and other, they do a light survey. And then after that's completed, they're going to have their information, they're going to tell us what the price is. Um, I'm just going to say Rushville, fifty thousand dollars. And then they come up with some money and Duke takes care of it. And I don't think Duke is, since they're guaranteeing these lights for the life of them, they're, they're going to do them right.
Well, it could be, I mean, somebody from the street department, if the town was comfortable, you know, hassling George Buck or somebody to just to kind of monitor and stay in touch with.
And that's why I'm really bringing it up. I mean, is the town board really to take that responsibility or is someone within their organization capable of that? I don't know.
You know, our biggest, our biggest concern of these people sitting here, especially me, is people getting into town. Blocking traffic, they can't get to our paycheck that comes into Main Street and patronize our business. The other night, on our last meeting, it was projected that if I dot only did the street, it would only take about four weeks. If they did everything, it'd take almost up to a year. Now, if they did just the streets and did four weeks, that wouldn't be too bad. But if they did everything, it would take almost a year and they would block more traffic. If the town did the sidewalks and their lights and that, there would be no blockage whatsoever to the streets. And I also want to know how much power this board here has got to work with us guys here that want it the way we want it and lay it on to I dot, say, this is the way we want it. Or are you going to let I dot predict what they want to do?
I'll add to it. It comes down to, do we have to lose hundreds of thousands of dollars in sales revenue for a hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of flat work on sidewalks?
We, we expect this board here to take into consideration who they're working for. Us people here in town want you to be in our favor and work for us the way we want it so we don't lose business.
Well, I'll address that. I will address that. I think that, uh, all the board members have heard from many people in the community who are customers of yours. And they feel pretty comfortable with us proceeding with the state as it is. And they're customers that walk in your door every day, so they're probably willing to make sacrifices to get there. Or they wouldn't come and talk to us. Because they know what a controversial project, uh, uh, project this is. And, uh, they don't want to come forward in a meeting because they told us that. But they're customers of yours.
Could I, could I interject something here?
Sure.
Number one, if I was relying on Brookville to keep me in business, just Brookville residents alone, I would have been out of business two months after I opened the door. I get business from people traveling through town and from way outside of town to come see us. I've got people that come from northern Kentucky, two hours northwest of Indianapolis, Dayton, Columbus, all over the place. So there's people, when they're driving through town, that stop to do business with the thing. And I do have a lot of customers from Brookville too. But a business like mine, I can't, if I was just relying on just traffic from Brookville, I would have been out of business in two months after I opened my door. So it is about the mainstream and I can understand where Ed's coming from. He's got, he's been in business for sixty years, sixty-five years. He's got people coming from all over and they like coming to Ed's store. And once you lose those business, once you lose those customers and they go somewhere else in the interim because it's a hassle to get into town, because you got, you got it torn up from the, from the face of a building to the face of a building, they're going to avoid us like a plague. And I've got people that need boots and I've got people that want boots. And the guy that needs a boot is going to, he's going to say, it's too big a hassle, I'll go back to him when this is all said and done. He may come back, he may not come back. And then people that want a boot, just to have a boot, and they're like, oh, we'll go over to Wild Bill's, it's a neat place. They'll, they'll say, ah, they get over there and it's a big mess, they're not going to come out there. That's, that's where we're coming from.
And when, and that's a good point. And when, uh, Bill Reed comes, I talked to him about, I said, why, can you do one block at a time? That way that all the roads open except for that one block. So that, and even when they do the project, there's going to be two lanes of traffic going down. It's just a parking space that you're not going to have. But he said, we'll take care of the parking. But then he said, he couldn't go with one block because it would be too expensive. And I think he said that at every meeting they came. He said, we were looking more for five blocks. And I said, well, we, we want it shorter, so there's, there's a little bit of wiggle room in there. But when they come right down to it, they're going to have a contract and then the town council here will decide what's going to go on the contract, is that correct? We, we get that final say. So, um, we like what you guys are doing, you know, coming up with these ideas and stuff. And we can take those under advisement and then look at the, the big picture like that. But when it comes right down to it, we have to do what we think is right for the entire town. And we know when we'd had, um, a few years ago, when the economy went kapui all over the world, okay? Brookville did some big projects, they're doing the water and sewage lines, that everybody had faith in them, they were going to get it done, they did. We didn't go out of business on that. When the different projects that we did, and then with the town here, they're still in the black. They're not in the red because they didn't lose money, they were, it wasn't me, that's why I'm saying they got, those guys. Because they did a very good job of controlling our economy. And so we're going to do the same thing here for this project. We're going to try to control what's going on to make sure that everything works out well for everybody. We're going to try to control what's going on to make sure that everything works out well for everybody. We can't promise anything, but we're gonna give our best shot.
But you're gonna say you five know more about our fifty businesses than we do?
Do I know more about your business? No, I'm a hard guy making one thing, one pizza, okay? That's not the point. My point is, if we do a project, you're missing the point. If you, if we do this project in town here, we expect everybody, the citizens that have businesses, the citizens that don't have businesses, to work together and, and figure out the best way that we can do this project together to save as much as we can. And if that means we have to put up a lot of extra signs, you have to give out flyers to people and say, this is how you're gonna get to my business for the year, you just do that. And you make it work and other communities have done these things. And they're sending me ideas, uh, right now, and I've only been talking to them for two weeks. Sending me ideas of the good things that they did.
If this group comes, if this group comes up with an idea to be able to pay for the sidewalks and get them done, okay? How much validity are you guys gonna look at it as, as being, well, they can do that?
We really can't answer that until we have the answer from the state.
And the state's trying to come and talk to it. But he won't have a whole lot of advantage because he said he's still in the first phase.
Well, the state said twice in meetings I've been to, we don't care if we do your sidewalks. We're here for a grind and pay.
I never heard of that, but they could've said that.
Are you in favor of doing a project where I thought just do the street and push that project, just I thought do the street? Are you in favor of that?
In favor of, I'm not sure what you're saying.
Just I thought doing the street so it don't tie up or spend very much.
You mean instead of doing the sidewalks and the light?
Instead of doing, turn it down for a year. If they do just do the streets, I understand they can do it in four weeks.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know about that. We'll find out that when we talk to them again.
Well, I just wanna watch your ideas.
I think that if we can get the lights done a year early, I mean, the sidewalks done a year early and if we don't lose any money on it, you guys come up with enough money? I would vote that way.
All right.
But the money is the big.
Is the money that you're using to do those sidewalks taken away from another project could be done? Because we won't want the state to do it? That's a fear. You got a pool of three hundred thousand that you leverage. You might miss out on projects five years from now because you used that money to do the sidewalks.
That's right. See, and that's what, and I don't think the Brookville Redevelopment Commission has three hundred thousand dollars, but that's true. If they have some money, they have to decide where that needs to be spent. And if they think other projects are more important than the sidewalk, then they will tell you that.
Where's a fairer place than doing up and down the whole street instead of a couple of special answers getting it like they've been getting it?
That's for them to decide.
That's for them to decide.
When do they meet?
I don't know.
I wanted to ask, do you know if some of the grant money that was, or some of the funding for the project, is that federal grant money or is that all state money?
I don't know.
It's, it's federal.
Some of the tax money right now.
Federal grant is paid to the state, they're part of that project. Is this, Endot explained to me that the idea of trying to bank that money or trying to get, if we were to try and allocate funds in sixteen to do the sidewalk project and then pay that note back in seventeen, that, that would something that, there's no way you could ever guarantee that note because they were dealing with federal funds, which could up and disappear for all they know. They would, they, no promise. But I did wanna make sure that, that it wasn't all state funded, it's federally funded. And then, um, the eighty percent deal, the eighty-twenty in two thousand and seventeen, if we proceeded on as it was suggested and went with this whole thing in seventeen, this town board has committed to spending up to twenty percent. I'm sure there's a cap. That is the number that I believe a lot of these people have been looking for, for a long time. In a November meeting that I was at, Endot met with me and Judge McMillan and we met with a group of people. That afternoon, they had to leave that meeting early to be here and meet with a few people. That evening, you guys held a meeting. And at that meeting, Linda had to shoot an email to them the next morning, explain to them whether we're in or we're out. That's the way I, I deemed this. And there was a number that you guys had to commit to. What is that number?
Eighty thousand.
How much?
Eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand. So we're assuming that could be part of that eighty percent on the town's part? Am I wrong or is that?
That was the match.
The twenty percent, okay. So I think that's where some of us were looking is to say, hey, if we tried to pull this project off in sixteen and we're trying to come up with the funds ourselves to do the sidewalk project, could we count on that eighty thousand or a portion of that eighty thousand to be spent in sixteen? Along with some funds of our own? I, I, I'm just trying to go outside the box to say, hey, instead of them trying to come up with a hundred percent to do this sidewalk deal in two thousand and sixteen, can't they assume that some of those funds that you guys set aside in seventeen, can we use that? That's just.
That's a good proposal, that's something to think about.
That's what we've been trying to tell you.
So you have to say it like you do. No offense, but that's, he made sense.
And I bet every business owner here can show you their numbers from last year when they closed down fifty-two and the road collapsed. We can show you a spreadsheet of the amount of money that we lost. You don't seem to understand, we can't, some of us retail businesses, we cannot survive by just passing out flyers. We have people that stop. Time and time again, people that are going to the gym, the minute the class lets out and all the spots open up, we get busy. So it's been proven, time in and time out, that when there's street parking, we get customers. If there's not, we won't. And we will not survive it.
You would understand though, the whole street is not going to be closed the whole time. Just a certain minute blocks. And they're not going to be closed, they're gonna have two-way traffic. But the parking would be gone there. But that's why we got the bike demolition.
And how long is it gonna take for them to do our area?
We don't know that.
Right. If it's more than a couple of weeks?
And it's gonna hurt.
Probably the biggest issue is, there's a few businesses in here that rely on tourism. We rely on local, but we also, Wild Bill, us on tourism, I'm sure Pizza Pete.
Main Street shop.
We're the cutesy shops, okay? We're the, you know, the place to go, uh, with the family. And if there's no place to park and I'm driving from Spokane, Washington, that's just an exaggeration. Um, I, I, I have no clue where your off-site parking is. And, and honestly, I just wanna get off of this because I got all these orange barrels. I've got cars real close to me because it was cut in half, passing both ways. And that's where our fears come in. Just with fifty-two being closed for about six weeks, I wanna say, uh, our business alone lost over fifty-five percent. Just that month. I, no business I think can take a hit like that for an extended period of time. And we're lucky that we work on a little higher margin than some businesses. You look at some of the grocery stores and that, they're running on much smaller margins, which, uh, is gonna make things extreme.
Point is that we're trying to do something for the town. And with the end product, we're gonna have a beautiful thing, we're going to have tourism, it's going to increase the businesses of everybody.
But if we don't have business on Main Street?
There's no reason to come.
Yeah.
If it comes, look at the pretty street pulls.
Do you think we really want you to lose your business?
I don't think you do. I know you don't.
They promised that they're gonna keep stuff open, but Randy, how many times they promised? And they ended up road blocking, they just did it in Fountain City in October. Oh, there's so much more traffic coming through than we thought. There's safety issues to them, to the people working on, road block, road block. Every place they go, they do that.
Well, again, it, it depends on who they give it, the main person in charge.
Well, it goes back to something you guys discussed earlier, the contract. And that's one of the things, as a group, we're concerned about some of the wording in that contract. I have found out in some of these other projects in other towns, the smart ones are the ones that are more successful with it. They put in as high as a, um, three thousand dollars for every fifteen minutes per lane of closure. So that way, if there's a lane closure, they, they really sock it to them. So they don't tell you that, well, we're gonna try to keep it open. No, if you close it down, there's a three thousand dollar fine every fifteen minutes as closed down. Make it, make the contract where they don't have an option but to keep it open. See what I'm saying? Make sure the wording in the contract doesn't give them an option. Cause if you give them an option, they're gonna go for the easy way.
Yeah, and you're right. And the contract, everything is gonna be in the contract, this makes the difference.
Is there any way that, you know, you'd probably ask them to do one block at a time? And, um, my son came to our last meeting, he's civil engineer, he designs these projects, that's what he does for a living. He, he told me, he said, no contractor would wanna do a job one block at a time because it would just be too much, too much extra work to it. But five blocks at a time seems kind of excessive.
Yeah, I know, that's what I told him.
Yeah, I think if, if you could, you know, even if it were two to three blocks, you know, even the businesses like Gordon Terra's and Wild Bill's, people will walk a block or so, you know? But to close it five blocks or unclose it, cause I know they don't intend to close it, but.
Well, see, and then that's, that's not decided yet. But that's something that, as a town council, you know what to push for there. We know five blocks is too much. And then that's not set until it's in to the contract. And if the contract says three blocks, whoever they get to do the contract, and you know what? Local people, if they are certified with the state, can bid on these contracts. It's not just out-of-state people that can do it or out-of-town people.
Well, the two companies that were here would probably be bidding, I would imagine.
Yeah, see, so, but the thing is, is what's in the contract that makes the difference.
And that's where we have to trust you guys because, you know, you're going, you, you're the ones that can push for those kind of protections.
And we, we want to, we want this to be a good project for everybody. And we know everybody's gonna have to suffer, whether we do the sidewalks one year and the lights one year and the road one year, you're still gonna suffer some. We just wanna make it work out the best.
Endot has repeated over and over again in conversations I've had and I think conversations here, that they're willing, and there's been some misconception that we talked about shutting down the roads and shutting down the roads. They have indicated that at all times, there'll be two lanes of traffic. The only time the road will get shut down is during Oregon Hill, which is gonna get shut down, what, in another six weeks? So we're gonna experience that here soon and see how that works. We're gonna know what that's like. But regardless, that, that's something I see, that I've, I've indications sometimes is they're shutting it down, they're shutting it down. No, they indicated to me at least, that there would always be two lanes of traffic. Any event that we went ahead with the project as presumed in two thousand and sixteen and left someone else front the bill for this whole thing, if possible, would everyone, and I'm gonna ask the people in the room for some consensus here, is, is that would, if they had committed to doing three blocks at a time? And no more than three blocks at a time, doing the sidewalks, the curbs, three blocks at a time? Would anybody buy into that? I mean, are you guys?
That would all, that would have, that would depend upon, would there be three blocks of closed parking, street parking?
And the rest open?
Then I would, I would stand with that.
How long would it take?
That's the question.
It would have time to it. And I, and I will also say in my conversations with Endot, is that they've always talked, they have discussed the idea of one construction season, but they've also indicated that we're way, we got our cart out in front of our horse or whatever. They've indicated that over and over to me too. But I just wanted to see if the consensus was that in the event we could go with the free, I wanna call it the free ride in two thousand and seventeen, that if they were committed to putting in the contract, that it would no, go, no, go no more than three blocks at a time, then everyone in this room would get their sidewalks fixed for free?
And then, and again, like, some people don't want their sidewalks replaced because they already.
Let me ask a question here, real, real quick. Someone that owns a business, okay? And it would cost, and most storefronts around here, you're looking at two, three thousand dollars to do your sidewalk if you paid for it out of your own pocket. Um, simple economics, if you're gonna lose thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, wouldn't it make more sense for you to fix your own sidewalk? I mean, I, three blocks at a time doesn't sound like a big deal, but if you look at Griffith, Indiana, what happened over there, it's a big mud hole. So I don't see why somebody that owns a business wouldn't take the responsibility of fixing their own sidewalk. And the other thing is, it's in, it's in your town ordinance that the sidewalks are supposed to be fixed by the person that owns the sidewalk. What are you gonna do, uh, ten years from now when the sidewalks don't look so great again? Are you gonna enforce a law to make people fix the sidewalks? Endot ain't gonna come back through here and do it again. It seems like you got a law on the books right now that if something needs to be fixed, it should be fixed by the landowner. Uh, and, and it wouldn't disrupt everybody's dag on business. Three thousand dollars to most people that own a building, and especially if you own a business there, it just makes simple economic sense to me that you'd fix your sidewalk.
And then come in and grind and pay.
And they grind and pay, and then we can put the lights up in two thousand and eighteen. It's, it's just so elementary to me that I can't understand why people can't grasp that.
Did you bring that up at your meeting?
Because if the money wasn't enough, we're talking about doing a split. We'll go seventy-five, twenty-five, if the, like, we're gonna grab your eighty thousand that you guys had set off, work with it. It's a lot easier selling, to go talk to merchants if we're gonna get a hundred percent of it paid, the ones that need fixed. But if we had to do seventy-five, twenty-five or fifty-fifty on it, it's, it helps.
You mean the merchants would pay something?
Yes, a split.
Get part of that eighty thousand would help subsidize.
Big time.
Again, you're going further than just merchants. I mean, Connie's sitting there, we're not considered, the penal's not considered in Eighth to Tenth Street. Wait, the Tenth, I figure, Tenth.
Well, I think you could be involved in that.
Third to Tenth, yeah. And everybody should be.
Yeah, and I agree. Everybody should be.
At least down to Derick Cottage, gee. Down to where your light is.
Yeah, Tinker Town and, I know the project's supposed to go around to Butler Run. And then we don't wanna jeopardize the improvement there at CBS that corner.
Tinker Town's a three-foot sidewalk down there, it's not fourteen-foot like the town. It's not gonna take that much money to take it down.
I think you're well aware of the concerns of everybody.
Yeah, we are.
One of our last points, I don't know if this is the time, parking meters. We, I think we need some, I don't know, somebody tell me only a third of them are active or are they even monitored? I mean, it just leaves, somebody can park there forever. Parking is, is primo, you want it. But if the parking meters don't work, it doesn't matter, the parking's not there.
Are you guys gonna replace the parking meters when it's all done? With new ones or?
It's never come up, but I know, uh, needs to.
Yeah, yeah, it needs to. Parking meters, yeah, parking, as much as I hate them, parking meters needs, needs to be there because if you don't, you'll never, anybody, I mean, person wants to park.
If they're being enforced.
And they're not being enforced. We've seen them out two times last year.
Well, it's hard to, it's hard to enforce some that don't work and it works and don't work and works.
I guess in our minds, in this day of tight budgets, it's a moneymaker.
Yeah.
Set the prices what you need, I mean, you know, everybody, I can't tell you there were people coming to Brookville saying, your parking meter's only a quarter gets, I mean, the way it gets us. But I know what I pay fines in other cities. I know we're not a city, but by the same token, unless we're.
Can't we get the money from the state for that since they get the fine money off of them? Why can't, how about we get the parking money from the state since they get the fine money? I thought you sent the five bucks to them. That's not true.
Stays in the police department?
Well, there's even more incentive.
Yeah, even more incentive, correct. Yeah, making the money, you know, it's a tight budget, it's a moneymaker.
In a small town where you have residential up top and business down below and you're along Main Street down there, parking meters are basically necessity because if, if you don't, what happens is residential people will park there and then it takes away the parking from the business. So, and, and you're not gonna, you're not gonna stop that. The only way you're gonna monitor that is through parking meters. And I, I don't, it's not an issue for me, I'm down over the hill, but I can see these guys' argument and I, and I can see that being in town every day.
Yep, we're just asking for.
Let me know you guys want the best for the town, just so the business owners do too.
Anyone else? Is Endot coming back to the next meeting?
He said he wouldn't. One guy is.
Are things still open for discussion at that point or what's their purpose in coming back?
I guess he just, I said, uh, what we were going through here and he said, well, I'll just come back. And he said, but I can't this meeting because I'm in Lafayette.
I mean, if we think it's premature for him to come.
Yeah. But he likes to come and just discuss things. But he said, you know, this is way too early to do stuff like this. But I think, you know, the more we can plan and try to, you know, get our ducks in a row, the better. But still, he said, things could change and mess up all your plans.
Does he have an estimated time for the project get started, when they'll have dollar amounts?
I don't know. You could ask him.
Where do we find out who's on this redevelopment commission, when do they meet?
I think they meet as needed.
Todd Thacker's present.
If we call Todd Thacker and ask him, say, when are you going to meet next, and we'd like to meet with you about something, and he'd probably say, sure.
Or if they could plan a meeting?
Anything else? As far as the dollar amount, I think it kind of makes sense that they're not going to tell us the dollar amount, because they don't want those two contractors ever just standing here to know how much money they got to fly by.
I got the impression from my conversations with Endot, that they needed some of those, some of those, those lights and some of that information, so that they could basically say, we have a project, and we're going to start, we're going to start gathering information. Because they need to get the archeological portion of it, and the historical people, and they, in order for them to get the ball rolling, they need to have something in place, and then they can get the ball rolling. That stuff that you've got in place can go back and be changed and altered, I think, to some degree. They just know that in order to get this thing going, we need some spec, we need some ideas or something. Those ideas don't have to actually be what I want to call factual, they do not have to be something that they are going to continue to abide by. They can be rough numbers, that consist of lightings and curbs and sidewalks and sixty percent, and then they call in and they start doing their studies, and I think that's what, they gave me the impression that they would like to get going with that.
And then six months before they start, if we say, we've got money to do sidewalks somewhere else, we don't need you to do it, or a year before, they don't have a problem with that.
I think that they'll alter their plans accordingly, I just think.
That's what I got, that's what I gather too, from the discussions.
Have, have we heard Endot say that specifically, have they said any cutoff time for how long before they can alter the plans?
There was a time frame, but I don't remember what it was.
There's utility contracts on it.
Right, yeah.
Anything else? You don't want us to vote on this, do you?
I don't think you can.
Yeah, I don't think we can.
I think, I think what you've done is appreciated, and again, you've heard a lot of the concerns, which you, just to repeat, but yet you've heard some new, you've heard some new possibilities, which hopefully will make it easier for you folks in the long run.
I guess, are you, I'm not questioning, are you going to continue with your commitment?
Nothing's been said, we were just kind of waiting tonight, I think we need to.
I think, it sounds like to me, like, more conversation needs to take place with that group, and maybe once a month, or maybe every meeting, or maybe you or.
We were concerned too about your time, what you needed from us and when you needed it.
We were kind of confused about it too.
Okay, all right.
Well, we probably need to know too, when the public meetings are going to start with the design engineers and then. We don't know, you know, but I think your conversations is going to help us have some input from the community on what kind of decisions that we make. Now, we may not agree with all of you, but, but we appreciate it.
Well, you're listening, we appreciate that.
When is the guy coming for Endot to talk to you guys?
Well, he's got, Bob talked to him about coming to the next meeting, however, two of us won't be at the next meeting, so I'm wondering whether that would be a good meeting to have, but I'd rather have it when.
You know the kicker about Bill Reed, he's not going to be here, he's going to retire by that, by the time the damn project.
Kelly, I'm going to retire at the end of this year, and I still very committed to my job. Because your, your reputation follows you.
You're going to live there, you have to.
Yeah, well, I'll call him in town.
Whenever you have, whenever you have that meeting, I'm putting you out there, Dave, but would you be willing to come to that meeting? So all of us don't have to be there, and then you could bring back some information, please?
I think there's a small group that could attend, if invited, yes, more than me, but you have, but now you don't need a hundred people there. We'll hold your hand, Dave.
If they hired a design group, if they hired an engineer, something must be going on.
We've got a preliminary, you see that?
You could always guess what's going on, but we don't really know.
When they were here the last time, there was like three guys here, weren't they looking for something from the town in like a five-week timeframe or something? And that's come and gone, hasn't it?
Which is, yeah, it was basically the lights, it's what we wanted to permission.
I think you've got that information, Gordon, tonight?
No, but we, what we submitted on the plan was, did not affect this part, it was. And they did ask, I think, it's, it's long, it's a ways away, but the schedule of events and things in seventeen that might affect traffic. Festivals, and I know you're probably aware too, that the tourism board committed to provide any signage that's necessary to help traffic and help these seven hundred people in the room here.
And also, the, when I talked to the Chamber of Liberty, she said, your project on Main Street is going to affect us. Because of traffic coming through to the lake, but I, I think it won't attract it too much, because once they get through town, they can go right up to the lake up to Union County.
Well, you're going to see a lot of them go out through the county roads.
It's a big project, that's why we're working hard on it, and we thank you guys for doing your part too, it gives us better ideas. Or more ideas, not necessarily better.
Anything for the good of the cause on Main Street?
Any, how about Endot, you're, you're, I just want to clarify, you're, you're going to talk with Endot, and you talk like they won't be at the next meeting, because there's going to be two people missing, so is it possible to have a special meeting or something that Endot will be at? Some of the, the, I guess, to move forward, the question is, going to be directed to Endot?
Well, I would say let Mr. O'Brien contact Bill and see if he'll be available following me. And he'll, he'll, he'll know by the next meeting.
That's fine, I just know that we're, again, we're, oh, we're shooting this thirty-day deadline, it was thirteen days ago, and now we just went and moved from the bottom, from two weeks from now, to three days. Two weeks after that, so we just, we just pushed it back thirty more days, just now.
But I also think that we're, we're having enough discussion, and the board is thinking enough, when we do make decisions, I think we, because we have thought a lot about it, it will happen pretty quickly.
I think that some of the information that they gave you pertaining to the lights and saying, hey, go with the, go with the Duke Energy's ideas or whatever, I think some of those might be some of the answers the state's looking for, so they can proceed on. It's possible that there's enough information agreed upon to give them the go-ahead, at least start initiating the plan, because no contract in sight.
Were we waiting on that guy to call us back?
Well, at one point, BLM was going to give us some sample lighting, but in the meanwhile, we've also contacted Duke, and had to talk to them.
But they haven't done the surveys yet, to even have an idea of what you really need, until that's done.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Lafayette this weekend?
Oh, yeah, it's like ten, and then he said, he said it'd be done by ten fifty. Hey, he wants to try a taser on Dave.
As long as it's not louder than my voice, huh? All right. What I have for you, the department has realized that we need an aerial ladder for our department, to serve the department and the, and the community. Based on our ISO, our recent ISO assessment, that we were discovered that there's a possibility that our ISO rating, which is our insurance rating, could possibly go down. Because of the, when our last assessment was done, was in two thousand, we had three pumpers in the department. And since then, one of those pumpers was nineteen fifty-two American with France. Obviously, it was, it was taking up more space than what good it was doing. It served well, basically just statutorily for ISO, but other than that, it was, it wasn't, wasn't serving our purpose. So ISO came out in twenty fifteen, did the assessment, and there was possible that we could lose our six rating, which, what that means to everybody in the community is possibly higher insurance ratings, health, the homeowner's insurance ratings. So a couple, and before that, before the assessment came out, we, the department has recognized that an aerial ladder is something that we feel that we can justify the use of and the, and the purchase of. So we've been looking, we've had dealers come down with trucks, and we've driven them around, set them up throughout the town. And a lot of people think that, you know, we just need an aerial truck just for these buildings on Main Street, but the justification of an aerial truck, if multiple houses in this town are, you know, houses built today have eight-foot ceilings. Most, and the majority of the houses that we protect in this town don't have eight-foot ceilings. They have ten-foot ceilings, ten-plus, ten-foot plus ceilings. And then the.
It's cool.
Yeah, and then when you go to the second floor, you got a two-story building, and then look at the angles of the pitches of the roofs, and to expect to operate on ground ladders on those roofs is just, it's not a safe working environment. So we've set the trucks up, you know, the houses, buildings on Main Street, we've realized that a seventy-five-foot aerial is where we need to be looking. We've looked at the pricing, a new aerial ladder is somewhere in range of six to seven hundred thousand dollars. So obviously with the price, where we were going to, we have a truck fund, obviously, that you guys have set up for us, for replacement of apparatus. And six or seven hundred thousand dollars was not on pace to where that truck fund was, is the money, the revenue that that truck fund is making. And likewise, after the assessment from ISO, we realized that we need to have three pumpers again. So to replace one of our aerial, or one of our pumpers down there with a Quint, which a Quint, it means it can pump and has a ladder, to replace that truck, one of our trucks with an aerial, we're not going to gain anything in ISO. We'll gain the aerial credit, but to lose the pumper credit is, is more. In the ISO structure, a pumper is rated fifteen percent of your total score, where an aerial ladder is five percent of your total score scheduled. Well, because this truck is a Quint, that we, that we're going to talk about here in a minute, is, we'll get points for being an aerial and also for a pumper. So the basic fire, and how they come to justify how many pumpers you need, it's, for ISO, it works off what's called the basic fire flow calculation. And they look at the buildings that you have in your community, and they say that, and we're rated at, they say that we need to have a basic fire flow of twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred gallons per minute, is what we need, is what our pumping capacity needs to be. Our two pumpers that we currently have, both have twelve-hundred-and-fifty-gallon pumpers. So the combination of those two together is twenty-five hundred gallons, so we're right at the very base of our fire flow. The reason we need an aerial, obviously, there's, there's several different rules, there's no one set rule that says that if this, if you meet this condition, that you should have ladder truck. They're all just suggestions, just like NFPA, you know, there are standards, but they're only suggestions, you don't have to follow them. There, there's no NFPA police that's going to come out and arrest you because you don't have, you don't follow the NFPA standard. Now, however, if you have an injury or loss of life, they're going to come in and they're going to rate you, and they're going to look at those standards, and they're going to expect, you know, they're going to compare how you run your department to those standards. So the rules that they say for justification of ladder is, if you have ground ladders that will not reach upper windows or roofs of buildings, the longest ladder that we carry on our truck is a thirty-five-foot extension ladder. Obviously, that's not going to reach third-floor windows on Main Street for apartments that have third-floor apartments. If you need long ladders and you don't have enough people to raise the ladders, because of diminished staffing levels, which obviously, we all have, because we're a volunteer department during the daytime, the number of guys that I can guarantee that we get on the call, I can't guarantee. So for us to take the time to fight the fire and throw ground ladders to affect rescues, we just don't have the manpower to do that. With an aerial ladder, that driver operator, once he gets the pump going, can set that ladder up, and you don't have to have two guys to, to operate the ladder. Another reason to have an aerial ladder is terrain and topography, obviously, if you look at Main Street buildings on the front side, especially on the west side of Main, on the front side of a lot of those buildings, they're three-story. You go down to the backside of those buildings, in the back alley, or down, I guess Progress Street, if it's even a straight named street, some, some of them there, you've got four and five-story buildings on the backside of those buildings. So obviously, and then also, if we were to operate on hillsides, which, if you come up Main and in the valley, everything's, there's nothing on flat ground, to set up ladders to work on the side of buildings, because of the terrain, makes it difficult. Where an aerial ladder, you can set up on, on grades and operate. And then the ISO rule, they say, if you have five buildings that are greater than three stories or thirty-five feet tall, you should have an aerial ladder, or five buildings that have a needed fire flow of greater than thirty-five hundred gallons per minute. So those are the things that we looked at when we justified to the department, to ourselves, that we needed an aerial ladder. And we're not just out here saying we want an aerial ladder just because we want a big shiny truck with a ladder on the top of it, because we've never had one before. It was a long thought-out process and justification, especially to some of the older members of the department, who, who said that, why do we need an aerial ladder, because we've never had one, and so it was, after we brought the trucks out, set them up, we, we all decided that, yes, this is the way we need to go. So when we decided we wanted to keep the other trucks, obviously, new, six hundred, seven hundred thousand shiny new fire truck wasn't in the cars. So we began looking around, and we found a used aerial, which is what I passed out there. It's a nineteen ninety-nine HME chassis. Which is what I passed out there. It's a nineteen ninety-nine HME chassis. Which is what this, our, uh, one of our pumpers is now. It's been a very good, uh, reliable truck with a Smeal aerial body on it. It's a seventy-five-foot Quint. It has a fifteen-hundred gallon amount pump, which would give us a total flow of four thousand GPMs for ISO, basic fire flow. It's, uh, has, um, seating for six. The mileage on it is less than thirty thousand miles, which for a sixteen-year-old truck, uh, that's just completely unheard of. The department that had it, we've taken an inspection trip down to North Carolina. We braved the winter storm Pandora and drove down there. This truck is in just immaculate condition. The department that had it. There are very few nicks and dings and rust. There's absolutely no rust on it. This department, this department has taken care of it. What's that?
The price.
We haven't got there yet. Everybody else talked for a long time. I don't wanna talk for a long time. So the, uh, so yeah, this truck is, these trucks in this condition are very few and far between. The asking price for this truck's two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. We have negotiated with them and we've gotten down to a hundred and ninety-two-five. So what I have there in front of you tonight is a purchase agreement. The truck right now is on hold. After we, they put it on hold until we went down and looked at it, and then after we looked at it and said, yes, we're still interested in it, they then put the, the broker that sells the trucks, put the truck on hold for ten days. If that ten days needed to be extended a few here and there, as long as we, you know, stayed in contact with him, he's given us leeway on. The truck will not be available for sure until the fall, early fall. There's a possibility that the department that, that owns the truck now is replacing this truck with a hundred-foot aerial instead of a seventy-five-foot aerial. The only reason they're replacing it is they've been looking around for two years trying to find a longer ladder. It's, uh, the department's outside of Asheville, North Carolina, in a suburban area there, and, and they're experiencing a lot of growth with chalets and taller buildings that are built on top of mountains, similar to the only place that I could compare it to is when they were talking to build those, uh, condos on top of fossil cell. That's basically what all those things look like down there, or Gatlinburg, if you've been to Gatlinburg and seen what they're, so they needed a longer ladder for their development. They've found one. The truck is there, gonna be available for them possibly in June or July. So there's a chance we could get this thing in July, July. So the purchase agreement is a hundred ninety-two thousand, five hundred dollars. We're required to put down a ten percent deposit. The truck will be as-is. There was, we could have negotiated a warranty, a one-year warranty in it. But with the condition of the truck and what a warranty would have cost in the negotiating phase, there would, there's, we would have had to have a lot of repairs to get up to that point where to, to justify the cost of what they were wanting for that warranty. So the truck will be as-is. It'll be shipped here. And then once, once the truck comes completely available, we'll have to make the full payment. Obviously, this truck, because we're adding to our fleet, I'm gonna have to buy some equipment to put on this truck. Probably anywhere, the low estimate would be ten thousand dollars worth of equipment that I'm gonna have to purchase to put on this truck, to put it in service. So.
Is storage gonna be a problem?
In the firehouse? Not if you have a Shirley Hunter. I'm just kidding. No, um, we can, we've, we've measured it out. We can make a fit. We're gonna have to double stack some vehicles, but we can make a fit.
How many years do you predict of use will we have for this truck?
I would say at, at the minimum, we would get ten years of service out of this truck. At the minimum.
I'd think you would get more if you
Sam won't care.
I would like to see fifteen, that one, because the truck's sixteen years old. Another fifteen years, you make the truck thirty years. NFPA says that really the ladder truck shouldn't be any older than fifteen to twenty years, and still be a frontline truck. That is the dilemma that we have realized too, because we're adding to our fleet and now, we were on a replacement schedule every ten years with our pumpers. And that's obviously gonna throw a major wrench into this. Now, the pumper that we have down there that is fifteen years old, that we would be replacing in five years, it's a good reliable truck. And do you think that we can get some more time out of it than five more years? Yeah, absolutely. Then would you, do we realize that we're gonna mess up our schedule? Yeah, we do. Where we spend our truck fund that we have now, it's gonna be pretty much gone. And we start from scratch again.
Any other questions?
How much is the truck fund?
We have two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars, I think. Somewhere around. The truck fund. How much is our QMCA?
Two fifty-two.
Two fifty-two? And it generates about twenty-eight thousand dollars a year.
Right.
Of that twenty-eight, uh, the fighter, the firefighters themselves, we give our run money that we're paid from the town, uh, back to the town to put in that fund.
Any other questions?
My only concern with the sales agreement will be the fact that you're paying the deposit down. I know it says it'll be in the, in light condition as would expected, but like, needs to be some more teeth to that maybe, because who's to say, I mean, we'll be in light condition, that's pretty big. And who's determining what's light condition? So, I, I don't know. Personally, but that would be my only concern for the, for the town, is giving up the almost twenty thousand dollars in the deposit, which I'm assuming will be refunded if the truck's not in light condition, but how are we to determine the light condition? Is there another, um, inspection gonna be set up prior to
Yes.
This?
Yes, it would be. Once the truck become available, we would, we would have another inspection that we would look, view the truck and if there were any major damage that occurred from now until then, or even minor damage, we say we, we took a gob of pictures of this truck when we did it.
He's saying the truck's still in service till they get their other one.
It's still an in-service piece of apparatus.
Until they get their other one.
I got you.
Do you feel, feel like that should be part of this though? That a re-inspection will occur?
Well, I think there needs to be maybe even an attachment to this of I don't know, a checklist of what kind of condition it's in now, so our specifics of the fire, I don't know, expert on it, so you need, but something just to, to document exactly as close as you can what kind of condition it's in. And then have that part of the agreement to sign off on, like, hey, okay, on this date, it was dent in the back right end, or whatever, whatever it may be. No, you know, absolutely no rust, or, you know, whatever, just as detailed as you can, just because if you go down there and say, oh, well, there's, you know, even tire wear, I mean, I can imagine which tires, tires are, but, you know, just specifics on the condition, just because if, if September's far away, obviously July's a little closer, but you know, or just in March, so that would be my only suggestion, I guess. I think I'd have something back there.
Is the broker's family, does they insure it to be in light condition? Say they're out on a run and a vehicle runs into it?
No, the department itself ensures it. Brokers only, all they're doing, they advertise it. They, they don't own the, the broker doesn't own the truck. Yeah, all they do is advertise the trucks out there trying to help departments sell vehicles.
Okay. Once you enter this agreement though, this, this becomes a part of your, uh, potential property, is it insured to the point that, you know, would you get a?
No, if the truck was in an accident and, and from this point on, the, the broker explained to me that if, you know, if the truck gets damaged and we decide that, you know, that, you know, the truck wasn't that way when we looked at it, when we signed this agreement, we're not interested anymore. We can, we can back out, yeah. We would void the agreement and we have a refund or deposit.
That's all we get out of it?
I'm sorry?
That's all you would get out of it?
Yeah, they're not gonna buy us a truck that we can
They're not responsible on final night type.
No.
Vehicle for you.
Not for us, no. I mean, they would be finding a light-type vehicle for them. It's their truck.
They're, they're upgrading.
Yeah, they might, they might, uh, if they totaled it, they might get a free, free truck and spend that money somewhere else.
Curious.
I'd recommend that, you know, you put a caveat on there for the mileage too. You've got thirty thousand over that X amount of years, prorate that and then, you know, stretch that.
In comparison, our, the trucks, our trucks down here, our mileage, our truck is fifteen years old, has sixteen thousand miles on it. The department that, actually the department we're buying this from, makes just a shade more, like maybe a hundred more runs a year than what we make, so.
Are they a full-time department?
They are a career department.
Yeah. That's the difference. They take them out.
Well, also this truck was a demo truck when they bought it. So it had, it had some mileage on it when they bought it, but when they bought it, you know, because it was a demo, it had reduced costs. It was, this truck was probably, even in nineteen ninety-nine, I would say at least five hundred thousand dollars based on the options that this truck has in it.
I have another question. Is there another truck like it in the county now?
No, there's not.
Could it be used for other places like Oldenburg?
Absolutely. We, we op, we operate under a mutterated agreement with every fire department in this county and adjoining counties. If somebody needs it, we'll go. Those are reciprocal agreements. We, we need it right now. If we need an aerial, where we've had an aerial down here before, Connersville's put down before. I need the approval to, uh, sign the purchase agreement. Even if, if, if we're gonna say Tammy wants to add some language, that's fine.
Are, are you're going to sign this?
I or you, it doesn't matter.
No, it would be
Probably would be you, but
If for the fire, yeah. And the other thing is, fire will make full payment fires pick up. I, I assume that's at the same time, but I'm gonna stretch the paper for remainder. Fire to pick up.
We ended Florida instead of North Carolina.
Did you say they were gonna deliver the truck?
Yes.
Oh, they will.
Yeah.
Is that why they're saying payment fires here, I wonder? Did they prepare?
No, they sent us stuff. This is their salesman that they use for I don't know, my, my, it's the, a blanket salesman.
That might be why you got prior to, because they don't wanna come up here with the truck and, and let us know the payment. So I guess that's something where payment can be held in escrow account and they can be assured that the funds are there maybe, that's what I'm saying, but that, that's language I would have a little bit concerned with. It's just, I don't say prior, and why is my money when they're not shut to the track?
I guess, my question from the board, is there any language that you want Chaney, that we think, you think we need to include in this purchase agreement? Other than what we've discussed already? Cause it's my thought that we could go ahead and approve it, then let Aaron and Tammy work out this language. And then I will sign it upon their agreement, if the language is okay, unless another board member wants to contribute some language. Okay, does anyone make a motion to that affect them?
Yeah, I'm making motion today.
What was it, what was it?
Approved this time. Upon Aaron and Tammy working out language to put what the board needs.
I'll second it, Linda.
And then when it's prepared, you can let me know or somebody, you know, you can make contact.
This money go into an escrow account?
It's going into an escrow account.
They can work that.
We're talking about the final payment?
Yeah, we had a motion. Did we have a second? Kathy second all in favor? Opposed, motion can.
Also with that, because of the equipment, can I have the approval to be budgeted up to two hundred thousand dollars? Get an additional seventy-five hundred dollars to purchase equipment with, for this truck, rather than taking all that money out of my uh, equipment fund?
So what is the seventy-five liter truck fund?
From the truck fund.
For that one, the equipment is there, Aaron?
Hose. I mean, it's a whole list. It's not that much. It would, it would be completely for that truck.
Is your motion that?
A thousand feet of, of, a thousand feet of supply hose for that truck alone is fifty-five hundred dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Sam made the motion to approve the seventy-five hundred additional for equipment for that specific truck. Second. Kathy second all in favor? Opposed, motion can.
Thank you.
You can't mind.
You need a copy? You guys all, no, I got a copy for everyone of you guys. And I had a copy for you, there were seven copies. I'll email it to you and all, his contact information is in there. So you can either call him or that'd probably be the easiest way, but avoid me out in the middle.
Do you guys contribute anything else?
I did. I don't know if I need to work through the redevelopment commission or through the town, but there is a utility pole. It actually sits right there inside a proposed parking area. That will be the town right-of-way, but part of parking, Joe Beluski says that we can refer that right-of-way for our parking spots. The line no longer extends to this building. We'll be pulling off this pole back here, but this pole feeds the CDS. I've been in touch with Frontier, but this pole doesn't really sit on our property. So I didn't know if there was a way that the town could work on relocating that pole. Right across the street is another pole that this could just be swiveled over to, so that would free that up about two parking spots. Um, it's, uh, Frontier, that's all I
Then, who would do the work? Frontier would do the work?
Yeah, they have to do the work.
Would there be expensive office?
Yes, it's probably anywhere from eight to ten thousand dollars. Yes, it's probably anywhere from eight to ten thousand dollars to that.
For you to cover?
Well, that's why I didn't know if we could work through the redevelopment commission somehow, get an approval or a, a, a nod from you, because we're gonna, with that being in the TIP district, the tax rate's gonna go from here to here. So that'll be paid back over time for that improvement. And I always think I'm right with that, that TIP can be used to relocate some utilities.
Yeah, I think so. I don't know much money there.
Or even, or even the grant that was used, you know, to help the bowling alley and, and, you know. I mean, it helps with the parking situation.
It sounds like somebody, somebody might be borrowing a meeting with the redevelopment itself, but I'd know that and let you know when that was.
And then I know we discussed a tax abatement earlier when we were storing different routes. I mean, this is for a new RE/MAX building. This sort of building, we're under contract, selling a building to another business that's gonna become the town. So I didn't know if we could explore the options like the Valley House with the possible tax abatement.
For your new building.
I'm gonna have to go to check this out, because it's been a while. I haven't talked to you since last time. Caveats of the type of business. Now let you know what it is. You didn't know for sure.
Right. It would be an office, it'd be like an office building. I'm gonna go with, you know, we're gonna maintain part of it and then we're gonna rent out suites. And so like a title company, a bank.
See if we want to see enough potential employees.
There's fourteen office spaces. Fourteen office spaces and two conference rooms. Some of those office spaces can be double offices. Uh, right now, we currently have nine agents. We're interviewing two more. And we've probably got two people that are moving there to rent space.
You'll check it out?
Yeah, I'll see if now that I know what it is.
Yeah.
I'll see if I'm wise for that taxing. Is this your, I could have Linda make copy.
She, it was in that, if you had that, whatever you did. It was in my.
There's a building for me.
Yeah, there's one there. It was in the building from, and a picture of the building in there.
No Pizza Hut?
No Pizza Hut.
That's good. We have.
No Taco Bell. I prefer everything. It'll be RE/MAX preferred truck.
Do you have any of these, Bob? Sam? Kathy?
Yes, I talked to Mr. Shatterfield, I'm gonna make a quick one. I talked to Shatterfield, I'm gonna get this off one.
What about?
How about one? He's, he's been complaining about noise in the valley. I wanna talk to you.
Daryl, do you have anything?
Yeah, I mean, you may could have heard your body.
That was on camera.
Dagger saw that.
That was on camera. You can see me. Anything?
You can only be in a certain spot so long.